My name's Jerry Esposito. I live at 533 here on Lane in Crestwind. And Tracy said a lot of good things, and I agree with 100% what she said. Just one other concern I have is really the traffic. And yes, I understand if it's commercial, there's still going to be traffic. If it's residential, there's still going to be traffic. I'm concerned about the one driveway that for the Publix and the Crestwind-Twin Lakes Boulevard, the timing of the traffic, right? It's rush hour. A lot of people, they're going to be young professionals trying to get out of there all at the same time. If it's commercial, that traffic is going to be delayed based on business hours and the main rush hour and the 53 traffic would be subsiding at that time. So that was just my main concern is really with the traffic that the housing will bring in versus what the commercial will and the timing of it. Thank you.
All right, and that is it for those that are opposed. And there is some remaining time for if anybody would like to come up from the applicant.
Hi, I'm Howard Borza. I'm a resident of Houston. 73 Sinclair Circle. Three things, I think. First of all, a few months ago, we had a meeting in this room where there were easels all the way around with a bunch of information about residential building and how many were going to be needed. And it was the time the city of Houston had approved enough residential buildings to handle the expected need through 2029. So I don't think we need 204 more residential facilities. Secondly, I'm sorry that Coulter delayed in developing their commercial property because if they'd have developed it four years ago, it would have been full now and they wouldn't have been complaining about Kroger or Publix or anything else. Third, I would only suggest that you, the planning committee, now ask for a show of hands for the people who are here, who are for this and who are against this.
Thank you.
I think there was one more. All right, I think we had one more that would like to speak.
Hello. Hi, my name is Alice Lee Tanner. I live at 508 Sam Freeman Road. I've lived in Houston for 29 years. I'll probably be here 29 years from now. My great-grandfather is Sam Freeman, and I feel a little concerned about this rapid development. I did a little bit of research, and according to the U.S. Census Bureau, we had around 1,400 population in 2014. It stands at about 6,400 now. That's a 400% increase. And just from what I've seen, you're really cranking out these houses. And I understand the financial incentive and I understand the pressure being on the planning committee to do what's best for the city. I understand that this is going to bring in a lot of people who are going to work, who are young professionals. That all sounds fantastic. What I'm not understanding is what jobs are available in Houston for these young professionals. We have, like I said, increased our population by 400%, but we're considering rezoning land that could be used to build businesses, that generate jobs, that provide income for the economy, development that's going to generate income for someone that doesn't live here at all. And I don't see the benefit of developing these areas for these young professionals to get jobs in places like Brazelton, Atlanta, when honestly, we should be putting our people first and we should be considering what the citizens of Houston, the ones who have been here for much longer than the 75% that moved here in the last decade, what's best for them. As it stands right now, I feel like I live in a city of strangers. I feel like there's people coming in, making great investments, they're going to make lots of money, but not for me or my friends. So with that being said, my time is done. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And with that, I will close the...
Well, we do have Mr. Bruce Williams. Did you want to speak on? You're good? Okay. All right, that will close.
This will, that will close public input for this. Nope, we have one more. Thank you. Okay, with that, close the public session.
Tony Lancaster.
Should be on. If you would hold it though, yeah. It's not on.
You just need to put it toward your mouth. Well, we're live streaming, so they won't be able to hear you on live. So sorry.
Jerry, can you help her?
I don't get to talk very often. All right, Tony Lancaster, 225 Shatuv Drive, Houston. And I'd just like to say that I know this is terrible, but I grew up in Beaufort. We got a McDonald's in 1973. That was our first fast food. Before that, we had three restaurants. Beaufort has always been a slow-to-move town about what it wanted to build. And I think Houston has really got in a big rush about how to use our four square miles. And I don't know what the rush is. I think we need to take time and consider what the ramifications of it will be in the future. There's not a big rush, really. Look at some of the properties that you're thinking about building before you make mistakes.
Thank you. And with that, we will now close the public portion of this event. So questions from the board? I have some. If you want me to start or is anybody? Yes, go ahead.
Are these for the applicant?
Mine are for the applicant.
Mine are too.
Okay, if the applicant will come back up.
Mr. Dunkle?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, Chris Harden. So a quick question.
Sure.
Did I read correctly that you were the original? You've been involved with this property since it was originally rezoned?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So one of the questions I have, and just full disclosure, I'm an economic development professional by trade, and so a lot of my questions will kind of lean in that direction.
Absolutely.
Have you completed any market studies for this property? And do you have any marketing material for this 26-acre tract as commercial? Because some of the resources that I used to track that stuff, I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, I might need to defer to Bruce Williams since he's the property owner on this. We're more of the engineer of record and entitlement work, so might ask Bruce to...
If he would step up, that'd be great.
Bruce Williams, 2700 Paces Ferry, Atlanta. I'm not a citizen of Houston.
Okay. I don't know if you heard my question, but for this 26-acre tract of land, do you have any marketing material, any flyers? Have you marketed it to any potential commercial developers? Have you done a market study to see what this tract of land could, what uses could go there in the seven years that it's been rezoned?
Marketing flyers, no. Do we have the site plan that we could put on the screen? The one that was zoned, if it's approved in the PUD?
I don't think it's in the packet, no.
You have the big one? When we rezoned the property, the city, 1,600 homes and 400,000 square feet, the thing that we wanted at that time was, they knew they had their rooftops for retail. And then it would not happen immediately. And the first thing that we were able to do, and it took four or five years to get Publix to consider coming here because of the lack of population, honestly, for shopping. So that was the first one, and it took a long time to get it there. When Kroger came, Kroger did not look at our site because they did not want to go next to Publix.
Publix, yeah.
That'd be an economic thing. They went across the street, Publix on the going-home side and Kroger on the going-to-work side, basically. So that's why they went over there. We have had conversations with potential developers about the property. Yes, sir, as they have sent out flowers and marketing. But I have had conversations with them about it. Yes, sir. As you can see, you might want to show that to everybody, what it can be now is this parcel here. Now, now? This is the Public Center here. This was our best guess is where it would look like. It does not have the wing on it now because Publix now has a pharmacy drive-through, so this was not there. McDonald's is there. This is what is zoned for 300,000 square feet and the 30 acres now. A big box, five or six or seven or eight out parcels. That's what it's zoned for now. So that was what it could be developed today.
Generally, for a parcel this size, would you agree that normally for something that large, that's going to be a big-box retailer?
Certainly, for one development, yes, sir.
Have you spoken to any such developers who wanted to put some sort of a big box there? I get that the Kroger and the Publix, the grocery store, those boxes are checked, but any other potential big-box retailers who wanted to go there?
I have.
Okay. And did that, can you share with where that went?
They're waiting to see how Publix and Kroger absorb the amount of retail that's going on the market and how they do before they proceed.
Okay. Do you guys have a commercial wing of your development firm or are you strictly residential?
Neither. Well, I represent, I'm with the Hudgens family. The part of the Hudgens that owns this property is the Scott Hudgens Family Foundation, which is a separate function apart from the Hudgens Company, which is a commercial real estate company. Yes, sir. And that, I'm executive vice president of that company.
Okay. Have you guys partnered with a third-party firm that does commercial development to see what would be viable there to kind of help refine that market over the last seven years?
We cannot. The foundation cannot act as a developer per its charter, so we cannot act as developer. We are developers on the commercial side of the house. We build public centers, et cetera. But in this case, because it's the foundation property, we cannot be a developer.
Okay. So one of the things that you had also said, I guess it was Mr. Dunkle, that you had looked at the housing mix in the city to see what was potentially underserved. Have you also looked at the commercial mix of the city to see what's underserved from a commercial standpoint?
No, sir, we have not. We took that comment and language straight out of your comprehensive plan. That's where that was derived.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. So most of my company's questions will come out of the section 43, 121, I'm sorry, page 18 of the zoning ordinance. But the first question, if you would, just take a moment because there's been some confusion about the relationship between the developer, Kroger's Twin Lakes, Kroger's Crestwinds, the Kroger, not Kroger's, Coulter, Coulter in Florida. If you could just take a moment and just let us know where you fit into that big puzzle. I just want to make sure I understand, have a clean understanding.
Yeah, so I represent, or I'm with Rochester DCCM, who's the engineering firm that represents and has done the planning and design work for the overall Twin Lakes community, all the infrastructure design, land planning, engineering plans. So the way I understand it, and Ben may want to correct me if I get this wrong, but Coulter Land Partners, that is now Brookfield Coulter Land Acquisitions, is... Yeah, okay.
I'm Ben Johnson. I'm with Brookfield Coulter Land Partners. We are, so the Coulter Group is a company based out of Delray, Florida, that is an umbrella company basically for a lot of different companies. Coulter Homes builds homes in Georgia. It's typically just Crestwind, under the Crestwind brand. In other markets, they do build under the Coulter Homes brand. There's Coulter Multifamily, Hostility, all sorts of different branches. And then there's Coulter Land. Coulter Land is in the horizontal development business. We build master-planned communities and don't build any houses. We just build the infrastructure and then sell to builders and let them build the houses. So we, Coulter Land was the original enforcer of this deal and then brought Coulter Homes in. We have a cost-share agreement. We work together, but we are two entirely separate companies. And then to add another layer of complexity on top of that, Coulter Land and just Coulter Land joined, merged with Brookfield Residential in December to create Brookfield Coulter Land Partners.
Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Okay. So I need you to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what I read in the ordinance is that if it's more than 10 acres, we need to have a traffic assessment? And I didn't see one in the packet.
There was not a traffic assessment in the packet. That is something we can add as a potential condition on the development is to have a traffic assessment or traffic study done.
But am I correct that it's part, it is in there, right? For 10 acres or more, there was a requirement for a traffic assessment?
Typically, yes, it is during the development process. This being a site plan amendment on a previous rezoning application, I'm not sure it's in there. But it could be something we could condition the approval on.
Fair enough. Earlier, and I didn't get a chance to write this, how many feet of public road would be in this development?
4,200.
4,200. Okay. So one of the things that I, as I look at the site plan, I do not see 20% of green space, which is a requirement. Is there any green space projected for this?
The original PUD called for an overall 40% open space. So each individual product or project or development such as this would not have to provide their own 40%. It's based on the overall 1,462 acres.
So...
Under the PUD.
So I'm just, okay. As we develop and we have families moving in here and there's a need for green space, how many, so where is the closest public green space in this community for these homes if they're built? I mean, I can't see green space being useful to these residents if it's two miles away. That's where I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, the only thing we've provided in this, in this plan, there is a linear park that's about 75 feet wide that runs along this street. That would be the green space for this specific area.
75 feet. Okay. Yeah. All right. Can you tell me what the lot sizes will be for these individual townhomes?
I believe we're at a 24 or 26, 24 by 100.
So earlier, you said that I believe, if I misquote you, please correct me, that you think that the price point is going to be right about $350,000?
That's correct, yes.
Which is in keeping with the average within Jackson County. But you didn't address whether or not that includes the lot price, that $350,000.
Yes, that'd be a final sales price.
Okay. And so my experience, my personal experience is, especially with new homes, that about 20% on top of that is by the time somebody comes in and buys a house and says, you know, I want to change this chandelier or I want to add another something or another. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I don't know how many features or upgrades will be associated with these, but typically, that's a starting price. And if you do upgrade your flooring or backsplash or whatever, that would be on top of that.
So we could easily get to 400,000, 400-plus. I mean, just based on averages of what my limited experiences, and I will admit my experiences with Coulter only, so I think it's a fair yardstick.
Yeah, I think as you move down in the price, in the initial price, those options become fewer, actually. So probably in the Crestwind product line, I know they have a lot of features that can be upgraded, but again, in the lower price ranges, there's less options for that.
All right. And, okay, and then earlier you touched about, I think you mentioned about build-to-rent, corporate-owned. So your intention is not to prevent that, you're just going to sell to the highest bidder? I mean, I don't mean to be ugly, but that's basically what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think these would be marketed as market price homes. I mean, there would be no intent to sell to a investor, but I mean...
There's nothing to prevent that?
There's nothing to prevent it.
And nothing in your business model that would prevent that?
No, sir.
Okay, fair enough. I did not see a build schedule. What would you anticipate it would take to build this out if you got the green light?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't cover that earlier.
Okay, that's fine.
I know it's probably one of the questions. We just penciled something out quickly. If a, excuse me, if a final zoning approval occurred in August, we'd probably submit LDP plans, land-to-service permit plans, have them approved or have them submitted by October. Approval of those plans, probably November to December. Infrastructure, roads, sewers, utilities would probably take till May of '26. And from there, I think you'd see probably a first-phase units built, you know, by October of '26, and then probably two, one or two additional phases, with probably a third-phase completing sometime early 2027.
Okay.
And then you would have some probably sales period on top of that.
Gotcha. Next question I have, and this may not fall into your area, but when I looked through the package, I did not see the campaign contribution disclosure document signed. Do you know about that or why it wasn't? Or was it just an administrative oversight? I'm just curious. I don't know if you can address it or not. You may not be able to. And I don't mean to get, you know, a gotcha. I just wanted to know why.
If we missed that, we certainly can get the appropriate signatures on that immediately.
Yeah. I just didn't know if they just didn't give us a signed copy or...
Yeah. I think you are looking through it now? Yeah, okay. Okay. And then I got two more questions and let's get you off the hook here. So has anybody from your firm or the developer contacted Dr. Brown in the school superintendent's office to get a feel for what the impact of this would do to our school system in Jackson County?
Our firm has not. I don't know if the developer has.
Okay. So it's kind of a rhetorical question because I literally was on the phone with Dr. Brown today. And while your development alone would not, you know, throw them into chaos, the addition is compounding to what we have on the books for the city now. In addition to that, you know, my rough calculations is four to five additional school buses a day, making two trips on 53, going down to Jackson Trail, which to the new complex, which is a consideration, and that's why I was asking about the traffic assessment, because those are prime times when people are coming from Winder to 85. Now, I do understand that the county is going to build a traffic circle at Jackson Trail and 53 that might ease that, but it's still a concern with that additional traffic and the school buses going on there.
I understand.
Yep. And then my last comment is, by any chance, have you talked with the city police chief or the West Jackson Fire Department to see what impacts these 204 apartments or townhomes would have?
We have not. Again, I think typically what we see is that comments like that are solicited, you know, by staff sometimes for those agencies, but we could certainly reach out to them.
And, yeah, and I have, and I've reached out to them. And so I will, my discussions with Chief Stevens, who's a fire chief, is, he has some concerns. He's got an additional fire truck on order in anticipation, and this is not just a direct result of this, but it's just as the city grows. So he's got at least one fire truck on order and he's anticipating getting another one, which is costs that the county will have to bear. As far as Chief Hill, who's the police chief, you know, we just, we just increased our police force from four to six, but it still doesn't provide us coverage from midnight to 7:00 in the morning. But this, these additional homes, again, compounding what we have, is going to call for additional resources. And so we just need to keep that in mind. And then I guess the other thing is this, and this is just Jackson County Emergency Services, and I'm correcting me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but we have reached an agreement that if they use, if they get funded for an additional tornado siren, we have given them the space on top of our water tower? Yeah, okay. And I do know that Jackson County has, does not have the current funds for that, and they're about $18,000 to $20,000 per. But as we move down 53, we do need those tornado warning sirens, which we don't have. So those are my questions.
Can you answer of the Publix, how much of that, because in the original PUD, it was 400,000 square feet for the shops, which was what it was called. How much of that was built out with the Publix?
Again, it was broken up basically 300,000 on the, on this subject side and 100,000 on the public side was kind of the way it split out in the original plan.
So it's a little over 300,000 basically square feet in the bank of what's kind of left based off the original...
The PUD did not specify where that had to be.
Okay.
So I mean, technically, it could, the balance could go on this parcel if it would support it.
Now, in your packet, there's a question here that says whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property which gives supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval. You have a comment in here that says, "The combination of these two developments," talking about Publix and Kroger, "achieves the mix and scope of the large commercial development. The remaining demand is serviceable by a large number of sites outside the PUD." If you haven't done a market study, how can you back that up?
I think some of it's intuition, I think, as Mr. Williams said. And I think we'd all agree, if there was a market currently for commercial, his price per acre would be substantially more than that for residential use. So they're in the business of, you know, selling this property for the highest and best use and the best price they can to support the foundation. So, and again, with his experience in commercial development over a number of years, I think that's where we derive that, you know, that resulting comment. think that's where we derive that, uh, you know, that resulting, uh, comment.
Okay. So I have another question. I think in your packet, you said somewhere, this large tract of land, the market is only really going to absorb, you know, a smaller tract of commercial development. Would you be open to changes to this, to shrink the size of what you have here?
Uh, that would be a developer question, but, uh, I can just, in general, say that, uh, you know, there's kind of a, a critical mass of, of units that, uh, gets the interest of, of national builders and builder groups that, uh, you know, supplies enough product for them to make it, you know, financially feasible for them to undertake something like this. So I don't know if that number's two hundred, or one ninety, or one hundred, but, you know, that is a consideration of, you know, you, if you make it too small, or if you bifurcate it in such a way that, uh, it, it reduces it to a number that's not sustainable from a marketability standpoint.
Okay. You, you all, you said you're engineer, right?
Yes.
So, uh, twenty-four point four acres, what topographic, geotechnical, wetland, or environmental surveys confirm that all that you show here is buildable? Is all that buildable?
Yes, uh, in the initial, uh, analysis of the property and part of the initial PUD, we did submit, um, a delineation report from an environmental consultant that, you know, showed this area had, you know, was available and did not have any, uh, state or local county mandated restrictions on it from, from that standpoint.
Okay. Can you speak to, because I think it was discussed, the traffic, whether it's townhomes or commercial, would increase. Can you speak to, if you've done a study, what's the mix of when during the day there would be peak traffic coming from either the townhomes, or if it were commercial, when would be the peak traffic times?
Yeah, I really didn't project any, uh, any, uh, peak hour traffic. I was just looking at a total average daily traffic number. Uh, when you start projecting the peak hour, you've got to start looking at distribution of that traffic, and that gets into a whole area that, uh, uh, is beyond my engineering capability. That's why you have traffic engineer-specific, uh, person, people that, uh, that do that.
Okay.
Any further discussion from, from the board? Okay.
Is there, is there an opportunity? When would conditions be discussed, if that is something that we wanted to do?
Uh, at that time, if you're finished with, uh, discussing with the applicant and questions for the applicant, that would be the time to recommend conditions.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I do have a couple of conditions, and I, I think this is informed kind of from my background, so one of the things that I think could work really well on this site, um, to get your point about critical mass of certain number of townhomes, but if you reduce the number of townhomes down to, say, half of that, maybe nine to ten acres of residential for townhomes, per the PUD, that gives you, it's what, one, ten townhomes per one acre? That gives you about ninety to a hundred. I think there's an argument to be made, because I think it was discussed, more green space. I think you could add conditions for about three to four acres of green space on this tract, and my knowledge of the market as well, that leaves about eight or so acres, um, maybe a little bit more of commercial development that you could specify. The density in the PUD says it can go up to fifteen thousand square feet. You could absolutely activate that with commercial, um, on that, and I think it creates a more interesting development that may not give you all the townhomes, but it gets townhomes, commercial, and green space, not just for these residents, but for the community as a whole. What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, again, I'm sorry, that, that would kind of be a developer slash property owner, uh, because I'm sure it would affect the, you know, the price of the property, uh, and probably the timing of, of when a sale could be affected, so...
So was the...
I don't know that I'm, you know, qualified to, or should answer that question.
You know, my, uh, my thought about that and kind of some of the conversations we had when we started looking at this, is that you get into an area, um, where, you know, we have the, the townhomes here, and we have the commercial out parcel. And I think that commercial out parcel is perfectly suited in, in the size and right to get, you know, more village-type retail, um, that's, you know, less chainy, a little bit more, um, you know, what you want to see in, in a neighborhood. Um, I think if you split this in half between commercial, the viable commercial uses for what you'd be left with are not what you want to live by, um, potentially. Um, and I think you're going to be in a situation where, you know, this seems to, in my professional opinion, and this is just my opinion, um, and I've done a lot of, uh, a lot of market studies, a lot of, you know, looking around at this and, and looking at, in all this, and I think, in my opinion, it's either got to almost go full retail, like the zoning plan with the big box, you know, home improvement, supercenter, something like that, or down to your village, smaller, two-acre tract. I think if you get in an eight-acre commercial parcel here, I think that's just a harder, um, it's a hard tenant to find, and it gets you to a place where it's not a, a neighborhood-friendly commercial, where you've got, you know, something you want in your backyard if you're going to own a townhome there. I think people have very specific, um, ideas about what they want to live by. You know, to your e- earlier question, uh, Colter Land does have a retail team. We do have a retail development team in-house. Um, that's my background, before I got into the residential side. Um, and that's, you know, that, that's my mix, because as we talk to the city and talk through this and talk with the owners, talk with Bradley and Rochester about, you know, this is what our seventh iteration of this site plan, um, to try to find something that works, and, and, you know, that was my, my hesitation there, our retail team's hesitation there, is that in that market, you get to a six, eight acre, you're probably going to end up with single, single-tenant, triple-net, out parcels, freestanding, and those typically are not what people want right across the street.
Okay.
So that's, uh, that's kind of what we were thinking.
Okay.
I have one, real quick, just on what you said. Have you, I, I moved out here from Snellville. Um, you ever been by the shops of Webgin?
Yeah.
Do you know what the size of that plot is?
I don't.
Okay. I believe it's nine acres.
Okay.
So, and it's pretty, with a couple of decent big box, which aren't big, big box, um, and a very village feel, in about ten acres.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think the difference there is going to be a, uh, a density in households and traffic counts. You know, I think if you look at that on a map, you've got a lot more, you know, a lot of these retailers and a lot of commercial retailers in general, the first thing they do when they, when they look at a site is they drop a three and five mile radius on it, and that gives them income, demographics, uh, you know, population count. And a lot of, I think that's just a, a little bit different, um, of a market from a density eyes perspective and number of cars coming by, um, every day, and, and, you know, that, and that's how we ended up with the smaller, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand feet that would be left on the out, the out parcel that's not a part of the amendment. I think, again, gives you your, your opportunity to have a more, you know, you know, I hate to keep saying village, but that's just, you know, the, the, something you would want to walk next door to, live next door to, something that's not going to be, you know, backing trucks in late at night, um, you know, causing tons of traffic, and I, I think it just makes for more, uh, village, uh, you know, more community feel, uh, you know, I'd say to your specific example there, um, you know, I think that's probably a, a traffic count, you know, a lot of, you, you get into that level of retail, and you're probably talking thirty thousand cars a day, easy coming by with, with, you know, twenty to thirty thousand within a couple-mile, um, uh, radius, and I, I think if you look at the map in Snellville and zoom out there, that's what you're going to see, more, more silver here.
Chuck?
Um, yeah, I just had a comment, you know, when, when we looked and we moved here and we bought, one of the reasons I bought was because, uh, the salespeople told me about the grocery that was going to be coming in, it was on their plan, it was doing it. I'm just wondering, you know, they said there's, you've sold nine hundred homes in Twin Lakes, those nine hundred people that bought, how many of them were sold that house based on there was going to be this commercial development out on fifty-three there, and now that would be gone?
Well, I, I, I think from our perspective, it's not gone, it just moved across the street.
Um, no, um, no, I'm not, I'm not going with that.
Maybe, maybe we're wrong about that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, how, you know, and that, that would be my thought, because I'm in real estate, and I know what real estate says people say. So I'm sure that that was part of the selling point, was, hey, you're going to have, you're going to have easy access to it, and it's going to be right here.
And, and I think if you had that there, if, if that, um, you know, grocery-anchored shopper had gone, you know, had gone there, it would be a site that, that fulfilled that. Again, I think what we're left with now, and of course, you know, we're, we're done right now in building lots, and, 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 you know, I'm in the process of getting turnover and bonds and HOA, and we could, Colter could be gone, and, and, you know, I, what I, I think, um, from our perspective, um, you know, seeing now that the Kroger has gone across the street, seeing, uh, what's left and what would likely show up here, um, you know, in our opinion, from the Colter Land side, would be a little bit of a detriment to the whole feel of the entire community and not, you know, if we had home improvement, supercenter, or something here, um, which I think is your likely user for a twenty-six acre commercial site here, um, you know, we would rather see town, I can't speak to what was sold to anybody, um, you know, I'm...
So where, where would the commercial be on this drawing?
So the existing commercial here would be here.
Okay.
Two-point-two acre parcel there.
All right. That, that was, I couldn't make that out on the picture we had, so...
Right.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? It, so my, my comment is I have, um, I have grave concerns about the stress and burdens that would be placed upon the emergency services, not only within the city, but Jackson County, the schools, uh, and this is not tied to two hundred and four, but it's a cumulative effect. Um, and these are, you know, not just whims, but discussions with those people that are responsible, um, traffic, I don't think there is a, uh, a good mitigation plan for traffic, and, and traffic is, is, just has to be addressed. It just has to be addressed. And then I have some concerns that we don't have anything in place, or you as the developer to prevent, uh, build-to-rent, which build-to-rent is an issue. And, uh, so those, those are my comments. Uh, I don't know if you have anything you... Yep.
Uh, first, Chris, to ensure that I've got your potential conditions correct, um, the first would be to limit the development to a maximum of one hundred townhomes. And then... Yes. Um, to include twenty percent of the property dedicated to green space. Um, and then the remaining portion of the parcel would remain the C2 or institutional permitted uses per the original site plan.
I would also like to add a condition that for, uh, we can negotiate this, for every number of residential COs that are received, they stop until commercial COs are received as well, so that you can track along to make sure that the commercial development happens, and it doesn't become, you build a hundred townhomes, and then we come back and see you a couple of years later and say, "Oh, well, we can't build any more commercial." So that way, it, it's a phased development of both commercial and residential.
Um, if, since these conditions, uh, would require a pretty significant, um, change to the site plan, and probably some consultation between the applicant and the actual owner of the property, um, if we were going to move forward with those conditions, we may consider tabling this application, um, until next month's meeting, so that they have time, based on those conditions, it may not even be a project they have the appetite to go through with.
I understand.
Is, is, anybody have an issue with that?
Oh, wait, just to address one thing you did say on, on the BTR side. Our, our intention is for this to be a feasible sold, not a BTR development, um, you know, and, and that's, that is our, uh, our firm intention. If, uh, there's, you know, if we have to have a condition or something to satisfy that, we are, we are fine with it.
Okay. Is there any other comment from any other board member? So, um, do we have to have a motion for the conditions or a motion for the amendment?
So we need to, uh, are y'all, um, if anybody wants to make a motion to do the recommendation of city planner to table it, uh, that's where it is time to come.
If you feel like you need to have a discussion with the developer to see if this would be something that they would want to consider?
Yes, I don't, I don't want to impose the conditions on a potential approval, and it be something that wastes, that is a waste of, uh, everybody's time moving forward.
That's right.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question for the board. Why don't we vote on it, uh, negatively? And if they want to pursue it beyond that, that's their, you know, to redo what we're talking about, smaller and so on. But let's, let's vote on it now, and I make a motion, we, we deny the request. We deny the change.
So there's a motion on the board on, uh, for denial of the amendment as proposed. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. All those in favor in denying the applicant's, uh, amendment to the PUD? Uh, okay. And so with that, we are going to move on to, uh, the next order of business. The next order of business is V dash twenty-five dash zero-one, a variance for, from, uh, Solins Engineering. This was on the docket because of, uh, legal requirements, but the applicant has withdrawn his request for that.
Uh, application V twenty-five dash zero-one was an application to reduce the number of all, all on-site parking spaces. The applicant withdrew that application because they were able to add enough parking spaces to have a administrative variance.
Okay. All right.
Um, Chair, if you can just ask if those that want to keep discussing, if they'll, uh, go outside, so we can continue business.
Okay, so if you can, would like to continue discussing, uh, this ordinance, please step aside, uh, so we can move to our next order of business. And the next order of business is all business, and it is chapter forty-three of the sign ordinance. Um, I know, so, um, we have discussed this in the past, and to our, our new board members, you may or may not be aware, but there were some changes, um, and now we're, we had some questions. Oh, okay. Didn't realize, we're stepping out. Yep. Okay, so, um, you, do you want to walk through this, or you would like me to do this? Yep, I am, I am, uh, looking at the pages with the amendments on there and questions.
Okay. So as you all know, that we have, uh, a couple of different times, we've gotten input from you all on recommended changes to the sign ordinance. In your packet, you all have, um, answers to some of the questions, and then proposed wording for different sections. Um, what we would be going with right now, um, unless there is any other discussion, it would be to send these proposed wordings to the council to amend the sign ordinance in that way.
So you're talking about, basically, the, the, uh, verbiage that's in red would be our proposed changes here? Stuff that, in, in relation, so a lot, I mean, a lot of this dealt with the stuff that I wrote up and sent to you.
Yeah, yes. The, uh, it is primarily the, uh, verbiage in red, except for on this first page under item number two, I seem to forget to change the, uh, color of the font to red in the proposed wording right there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
For taking those out there, too. Um, I just had one question, and it was looking through, and it's not on here, it's actually, if you go to page twenty of the sign ordinance, it is on. It's not on? Okay, well, the button's lit.
It's, this is, is, okay, now? Now I got to get close to this thing. Oh, dang. All right. Uh, just, just one thing, on page twenty of the sign, it's under forty-three dash one-twenty-seven, marketing signage for residential subdivision. Are you with me?
I'm with you.
Uh, right there, first line, special sign allowance applies to subdivisions containing detached, single-family dwellings. Wouldn't we also want to put attached in there? Detached, attached, and single-family? Or not?
Give me one moment.
Sure. Sure.
Would, uh, the proposed change be to strike, um, detached, single-family dwellings, and where it says, this special sign allowance shall apply to residential subdivisions?
Subdivisions containing attached, single-family, or attached?
You, you want to add attached and detached?
I just was saying, shouldn't, shouldn't attached also be in there?
Yeah. I, I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable recommendation, yeah.
Okay, because that's, that's the other type of property that could pop into a subdivision.
And did we address, uh-
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, it does address the fines.
Okay, I thought, I thought it did address the fines in here.
Yep.
Um, so I did have a comment, though, somewhere along the way, where he, where you were, you didn't understand what I was asking, and I, unfortunately-
Page four, the highlighted part there.
This could be an item further, okay, seven. Page twenty-one, section forty-three, one twenty-eight. Uh, this could be an item for discussion, but I question what this achieved, and what did I have in here?
I, this might have been, uh, I may have put something in here as well, and this, my concern, if this is the one I'm talking about, is not having any signs within one hundred and fifty feet of a crosswalk?
No, this wasn't that. This was, this was dealing with-
This, uh, regulates weekend signs.
Weekend signage, and, and the reason that you, you didn't, I came from Forsyth County, and actually, this came right out of their sign ordinance. I cut and pasted because it had gotten, with all the new development that was going on there, um, you would pull up to an intersection, and there would be fifty weekend signs for three developments.
Right.
They would be everywhere, and there was nothing telling them when they had to be down by. Uh, it was a mess. So, um, that, that's what I was trying to deal with here, was to keep basically blight off of our, because I, I believe it was also already dressed in another area where it goes up by, uh, they can go Friday night, uh, I think after six o'clock, and then have to be down by sometime Sunday. I believe that was already in there.
Yeah. So what's already in there for the time limit is that, um, that they are allowed on Friday, starting at five PM, and then they must be gone by Sunday at eight PM. Um, one of the reasons, you know, one of your options here was not in a public right-of-way.
Right.
It stipulates in here for the weekend signs, um, that, in addition to like everything else that is in this chapter, and previously on section one oh eight location restrictions, it, uh, it lays out restrictions for signs in the right-of-way.
Okay.
I just think that, um, many of the things that were suggested right here are covered in other portions of the sign ordinance, even if they're not right under weekend signs.
Okay, all right. As, as long as it's covered somewhere, it was just, I mean, it was a lot to read.
And exciting, too.
It was. Um, so was there, um, any, any fine listed anywhere else for weekend signs? If they, if they violate?
So I, I would say the fine for weekend signs would be the same as the fine for any other sign violations, the, um-
Okay, as long as it states it somewhere.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only thing I'm getting at. I, you know, I know with people that say, well, it didn't say I couldn't do this on, it said, a weekend sign. No, those are signs for my permitted signs that I get fined for. That's, um, I'm anticipating the person coming up saying that, because I know those people.
Um, I, I do have a comment, and it's on item ten.
Yeah, I knew you were going to, that's why I didn't touch it.
I know, and it refers to page eighteen of the code, and it talks about, um, and I'm very adamant, and I'm going to try not to be passionate about this, but, um, I've asked that there be a comment included in our ordinance for signs, that the flag of the United States must be displayed in accordance with current US law and code, and current Georgia state law and code. I, and I'm not asking for anybody to do anything different, but I believe if a business comes to the city and gives us a hundred and fifty dollars for a business permit, they're signing up to this. They know what they're going, and if I do not want to go down Main Street and see a US flag with a SWAT sticker on it, or a statement that says city council is terrible, or anything else, you're going to fly the United States flag. You need to fly it in accordance with established laws, and codes, and Georgia codes and law. Too many servicemen and women have died for this flag, have been wounded for this la- flag, and millions have served it. It's, the flag is what brings us together as a country, and I cannot tell you how important that flag is to, to most Americans. And we're not asking them to do anything different. We're just asking them to say, you fly the flag, fly it the way you're supposed to, be in accordance with the US law and Georgia law. And I don't think, I don't, I don't think there's any ambiguity to that at all. That's just my point. I understand the thing about First Amendment, you got a flag in your front yard, that's different, but if you're going to come and display a flag for a business, you know what you're signing up for. It's just like moving into a community with an HOA rule, you know what you're signing up for. That's my point.
And I saw, I saw your comment here, Hugh, and, uh, you, you maybe misinterpreted what Ace was getting at, because we can't limit the type of flags people fly because the sign ordinance can't regulate content. That's not at all what we're asking for here.
Uh, that also addressed a, uh, previous comment where somebody, uh, noted something about, uh, Nazi flags and Confederate flags potentially being flown or prohibiting those, and-
Oh, okay.
We just outright can't tell them they can't do that.
Yeah, no, we, I, I, and I totally agree with that. People have, have the right to do what they want, but I think all we're asking for here is that we just put in what the law says, and says, hey, you're going to fly the flag, you need to follow these regs. I, I, I don't see a problem with that unless you see some legal issue, but I don't even know what that would be.
Oh, one of my, um, concerns with that is, uh, the US flag code, part of the reason that it does sur- survive, uh, Supreme Court challenges, when laws regulating things like the burning of flags have not survived Supreme Court challenges, is that it is a permissive code. It uses the word should when talking about how to display the flag, um, instead of the word shall. I, if we want to add that into our sign ordinance, that we sh- that we will follow the US flag code and US law, we can definitely do that. Um, I think it does, it creates a potential for confusion on exactly what those laws are sometimes, um, because, uh, Ace, I have no doubt that you know, know the flag code very well. There will be people that do not know it as well, that want to comment on it. Um, and I think we're just setting up for a little bit of an administrative burden there, but i- if we want to add to display the US flag in accordance with the US flag code, I have no issue adding that at the, into that section.
City, city council also has to approve everything, our recommendations.
Correct. What we are doing is just sending a recommendation to the city council.
Right, so let's put it in, and if they want to nix it-
Yeah.
They can't.
I would go along with that, too. It's worth the risk. It, it, it's the flag, it's worth it. If it causes some turmoil, we'll deal with that.
All right, so is there a motion on the table to approve these? Are you completed with those?
So I would, I would, wait, you catch up real quick.
Sorry, you let him catch up real quick, sorry.
That's okay. So I think the, the motion on the table is to include the comments, with the exception for item ten. In item ten, we will add the US code and the Georgia state code for displaying of the US flag within the city limits.
Yeah.
Is, so that would be my, my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, there you go.
So that includes, concludes old business at this time. Uh, we are open for public comment, except for any items that we've already discussed earlier today. Is there anybody that would like to address the planning and zoning board at this time? I do not see anybody, so with that, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.
Oh.
Hey, uh, I want to do something real quick. Uh, just, we also, um, I want to do something, um, when we have chair and president, uh, in the House, and we're just trying to- Yeah, oh, sorry. And, uh, so y'all, we'll be talking about each other, um, because we're, we have the, um, uh, we're gonna be here.
You doing anything?
Uh, well, y'all won't, but the council is, yes, sir. Uh, but, yes, but your homework and your mission is to, uh, you know, and here, so y'all talk about each other, and just ask who y'all want, so you're, you're making.
Don't leave. I've made a little mistake on yours, let me go get, make a change. Actually, or do you, do you come by tomorrow, or do you want to wait? I can go do it real quick, or you come by tomorrow?
Go ahead, uh-
Okay. Chris, come by my office.
Yes.
I text you.
Did you?
Yes. I just finished your little thing that you needed. Yes, I was telling you, I'm going to, I'm going to send it to you before I leave today. So, turn to my office and get done.
Either of you have a, uh, co-chair or chair, I would announce, because that's what you do.
Okay, if he's not interested, I will.
Mike, last next meeting.
I want to know if this is one of the, uh, maybe.
Okay.
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 Okay.